Pledge of allegiance is first.
All right. First is a public hearing on the medical marijuana ordinance. Somebody like to make a motion to open that up?
So both.
Is there a second?
I have a second then.
All those in favor? Okay. All right.
Did you have Max up there?
Yes, sure, Max. Highlight us what's going on.
I'm gonna steal your mic. So, the version that you have is a bit of an updated one from the last one that Stan Walson and I had sent initially. It removed the public hearing quest and there were some other changes, so it gets very similar to the medical marijuana ordinance that the committee originally worked on over a year ago. Now since then, there has been some concern about the exact language, so tonight unless there is someone else in the audience who wants to speak on this item, I actually am gonna request perhaps tabling the matter until April 12th.
Okay. It should probably just here, maybe here.
Yeah, I'm just wondering how we're gonna go forward with this. How will you have it ready by April 12th?
I'm gonna be working with Freeman Zousner, who was on the marijuana committee originally, to work on the language to ensure that it's not opening up any loopholes that we want to avoid.
Yeah, I don't speak for Freeman, but I believe you were concerned that the language as drafted was a bit broad and might open us up to a situation where we're inadvertently opting in when we don't want to. Is that correct?
Could you just come up Freeman and hop right up there and give us your, do that under public comment, so.
Bryce Starr, Freeman's house, former resident. Does everybody have a copy of the EDP body?
The one that Max handed out, yep.
So just giving you one example, in the document, it talks about cultivation, but in main law, caregivers and the retail stores have the right to cultivate to their patients, but it's incorporated into their own registration in their own act. So when it says cultivation, it refers to large cultivation facilities that are independently registered with the state, which can be up to 20,000 square feet and have enormous fees. So it really doesn't need to be there because we don't have cultivation as such as a standalone. Another example. It has, like example, testing. We don't, there's registered testing facility, there's ten allowed in the state. You don't allow that. So these are the things the lawyer pointed out. There are ambiguities that really we need to work on. One of the things I read, it also has to do with the fines. It says that there's a $500 fine up to $2,500 for repeating offenses, but it doesn't really attach that fine to specific acts. So if someone doesn't have a deadbolt, you're gonna find a $500. When we were in the committee, we really didn't wanna over-regulate the medical people. We wanted to have rules we felt were really substantive and appropriate, like fire safety, hours of operation, et cetera. And this comes from someone, even though, as you know, I never want to opt in, but given that the law allows caregivers and allows these two municipally-approved retail stores that are grandfathered, I didn't really want to create a situation where we overburden them and in effect contradicted the law as it was intended to be. I can go through the rest, but there are just these ambiguities which the lawyer from EDP body, I should take this off, sorry. It's hard to breathe with 95. The lawyer from EDP body really pointed out into you that, you know, it can be cleaned up. And we're not lawyers, and I would suggest that whenever you make a change to a legal document, even a few, we need to bring it back. I'll pay, you know, the EDP body costs me, but I'll do that and you can do that, and then we know that we have something that's right. And that's precise. Because really, again, the only two things that our town now allows are two grandfathered stores and caregivers working out of their basically their own homes. Nothing else is allowed and we shouldn't have any ambiguity in this or captions that allude to something that might, that we haven't permitted. Now if someone, I shouldn't say this, but well, if someone really wants to opt in, then I think we should have a totally different discussion and broaden it up to the whole community and say, we actually, there are people that wanna opt in. But right now, we haven't done that. So I would look forward to working with Max a week from today, and then we would go out, certainly to my lawyer, if Max wants to yours, and come back to you before the 12th, which I think something would be more precise, probably shorter, and more to the point.
Max, do we have any grow houses here or facilities? I know, I theoretically know of two.
Oh.
So are those, what do those fall under, under this ordinance?
So, the way the state has, and stands in the other room, so I can try and grab him if he needs to clarify better. For growth, someone doesn't have to operate it out of their home. They can operate in a third-party location if they want, as long as it's still an office. Same thing with the cultivation. They don't have to live in that spot where they are growing. That all falls under the state's law on it. As long as what they're growing goes to their patients.
Okay.
They can grow.
So they can get away with it that way?
But it's still.
You go ahead.
But it's still within what a caregiver or a retail store is allowed to do. Versus, for example, this talks in one of the captions about a medical marijuana testing facility, but we don't allow that. So why would it be in ordinance, even as a caption? There's only, I think, 10 allowed in the state and they're actually authorized by Augusta and not by us. So I just think we need to have cleanup.
Yep.
Because you don't want to have someone coming in and say, geez, it says medical testing, I wanna apply to the state and have a testing facility here.
Right. Okay. Is there any more questions? Any more comments from the audience?
I will be close to public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, so what's the motion?
We table this discussion until our next meeting on April 12th.
Is there a second?
I have a second then.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? For the 12th. All right. Our next public hearing, life safety ordinance. Somebody like to open up the public hearing? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay.
Max is back up.
Max is back up. He's on the hot seat tonight.
Poor guy.
This is what I get when Stan decides to hand it in the back. So, again, Stan and I made some changes to this compared to last time. It's, first of all, the title, we should actually acknowledge, isn't called the life safety ordinance anymore. I think there was some confusion last time for that. It's just being changed to the Waldeboro rental registration.
So it's not even an ordinance at this point?
It's not even an ordinance at this point. This is a, just a process for Stan to handle rental units. I think Bob, you mentioned somewhere that the word ordinance was in here. I don't know if you see that somewhere.
Yeah, it's in paragraph four of this attachment, four at the top, under purpose.
Under this.
Last, the very bottom line.
Yep, under this one.
Yep.
So, registration form is what it's supposed to say.
Yeah, and then you use the word should in paragraph three above that. And I don't know if you wanna say should. I think you wanna say either shall or must.
Shall, must. But, so yeah, so then those two changes, it still has the original intent that Stan Walts had for it. It's just a process to ensure that there is some safety measures in each rental unit. That's, that's the gist of it, really.
Some of the questions on here, like the outstanding property taxes, why would you put that on application?
Are there outstanding property taxes owed?
Yeah. Why would you put that on application?
I can go get Stan to answer some.
I'm just curious, I'm just. Number of occupants overnight.
You gotta be overnight.
I don't, I mean.
That's really hard.
Because typically on a rental, and these are all for, I mean, I understand that potentially for Airbnbs, but.
Right.
But.
You're looking at it in a very narrow way, so this also pertains to.
Septic.
Septic issues that come with people renting that might have, it might be a two-bedroom septic. And you're right, you can have somebody come to your house and you can have them stay, family visiting. Or if it's every week that a two-bedroom septic is rented and there's 12 people in it, that might cause an issue.
How do you answer that, though? I mean, how would?
That's my question. How do you answer that?
I don't, I don't know how to answer that question.
I think you would put what you're renting it for online. If you're saying it's a, you know, a six-person house or a three-bedroom house, that's what your septic should be.
No, what I, my question is maximum number of occupants overnight. I wouldn't know how to answer that.
Well, I think that if you so if you're going to rent to people, I'm assuming you're going to know how many people.
Yeah.
You're renting to. To me, that would be, the typical maximum would be the people you're renting to who would be there. Not like, I don't think anybody's gonna go at Christmas and say, oh, well, you had eight people and you said you only had four people. I think the prob-
It's the maximum, I think, that confuses me. Maximum, to me, says that that's as many as you can ever have overnight. That's maximum.
But you may want that.
Right.
So you're looking at it as somebody who rents a
Yeah.
a rental year-round.
Yeah.
But we're also looking at it as people who can rent on a weekly basis.
Yeah.
And have that.
Right, so that, that may address the weekly, the short-term rental. I'm not quite sure how it addresses a yearly rental.
So perhaps make that a bit more specific is what your concern is about it being.
Maybe have two different lines.
Have one for the short term and one for the long term.
For like an Airbnb or something like that.
Yeah, 'cause I really wouldn't know how to put that down.
I mean, I, most of my places have town water and town sewers, so I don't have to worry about a septic system, so.
Right, but you still have to answer that question.
But at the same token, how would you feel, and I, you guys are looking at very specific personal cases. If you were to look on a much broader scale of what some landlords here face, is some people, and I mean, I've seen this before happen, where they do an Airbnb and they rent it out and it's supposed to be four people and you get there and there's 12. It gives you, the landlord, the protection of saying, you know, this is what it is, you have to leave, I rented to four, my applic-
I understand that part. That makes sense.
Oh, yeah, no question.
I understand that.
Yeah, okay.
That's fine.
That's not, that's not the issue.
Right, no, that's not the issue at all. It just, it seems to address the short term.
And we, I think, I think some common sense has to prevail here, too, is that if you write on here, I'm connected to sewer, or
Town.
Town water and town.
Sewer.
Sewer. Yeah, I, I mean, I thought this was a better way of, everyone seemed to be upset about having to pay an extra $5 for three years, so we took that out, so I guess, you know, it'll just be, we can set it at a different time. And I just wanna point out, too, this does offer the landlord some protection, God forbid something does happen to your house and you've gotten the inspection and you've had all these things, but the tenant says you didn't, you have something that was inspected that says you did actually comply with it. So there is some protection that it also offers the landlord. And again, this isn't to get good landlords in trouble or anything like that, but it's to truly try to combat some of the practices that do happen on a regular basis. Not all landlords are created equal, just like not all tenants are created equal.
Yeah, well, is this something that should go with a lease? That the renter receives?
You mean, are you saying that the rental regist, like this filled out and signed by Stan, this goes to the tenant?
I don't know. I don't know. I see it's for the property owner, but is there, is, is the renter supposed to get a copy of this or not?
It's more for the town and the landlord.
Bob has his hand up.
Oh, sorry, Bob.
Two things. The very first line, you've got a space for fee. Is that intended as an application fee? And should we not say application fee if that's what it is?
Yes, I think the fee is supposed to be more of the initial one and renewal as if it's a repeat.
So if I.
But I can have that clarified.
Okay, if I take out a registration, I'm applying and presumably I'm paying a fee, so I'm guessing that's an application fee. But more generally, when you stay at a place and pay rent or you pay a rate to stay there, you walk into a room and there'll be a framed certificate on the wall. It usually says occupation certificate. Is that what we intending here? Is that what we want? We want an occupation certificate?
So you, you mean like an actual certification, a CO? No.
No.
I think the intent of this truly was to make sure that there are basic life safety issues were handled. The smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, and you've got a fire extinguisher. I think it was the minimum.
A gas detector if there's a gas or propane.
Right, if there's a gas or propane stove.
And I just realized occupation is the wrong word. It's an occupancy.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. I see your point. I'm just.
And I, it's not as strict, it wasn't, it wasn't done as a money-making thing. It was truly done as a safety thing.
Yeah.
And I think even Stan even took out any inspection of the windows.
And I sympathize with that. I mean, we've seen cases with our community navigator where there have been situations that people shouldn't.
Oh, I don't disagree. We don't have issues in town, but.
How do you handle it?
Yeah, without punishing the people that actually are doing it, you know, like, you know, it's not a big deal, but it is, but, you know.
And this is good for how long?
It was going to be three years originally.
Okay, so I'm just looking at, just my own personal questions that other people may have also. Insurance policy, that's easy. Expiration date, it's yearly, right? Insurance policies are yearly, so. How do you do that? If it's for three years, then the expiration date's gone by the time you get to your third year or second year. And primary residence?
Yeah, I was gonna, that was my next question.
Yeah, I didn't get that either.
What was that, in there for Max?
Is it your primary residence where you're leasing it out to someone else, or do you live out of, or do you live out of the state and just rent it out to someone?
Why would you live in your own rental? Then it wouldn't be a rental.
Because you might have an in-law apartment.
Right.
Something like that.
Might be a house where you split it, you take one half, you rent out the other half.
Duplex or something like that.
Okay.
Okay, I just.
Yeah, I just was, it confused me. Number of beds. It's beds, not bedrooms.
Correct.
So if you'll notice, when you go on Airbnb, it has number of bedrooms for, number of beds 12. So that normally gives you a good indication that it's, you're probably over your occupancy if you have four bedrooms, but there's 12 beds.
Yeah, it's really sleep so many.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, that's pretty standard.
But you can typically tell when it's, unless it's a really big house, you're not gonna have 12 beds. But you'd be amazed how many times we see that.
Is there any public comment?
So it's not really even an ordinance anymore. It's just an application.
Right. It's more of just a form for Stan to handle it, similar to site plan reviews.
It's taking the teeth right out of it.
How do you enforce like the Airbnb's to do this?
Without an ordinance, you don't. It's gonna be on.
Because I, I know a number of them that do that. They, they overbook them for a weekend or whatever, you know what I mean? And I just, I don't see them like willingly coming down, filling this out.
They're not going to without an ordinance, but the ordinance didn't seem to really gain a lot of traction.
Covered trash container.
So that animals, a lot of times, if the rental's over at the end, what we're finding is that if they're not covered, then the trash is left for the neighbors to pick up and we've gotten complaints about that.
Yeah, no, I understand that part, but like people who have garages and keep their trash in the garage till they go to the dump? Or bagged.
Bob has his hand up.
Oh, sorry, Bob. I'm just studying it, trying to think.
I'm just wondering if we might consider closing the hearing and then act on it by scheduling a workshop or a work session.
If that's what the board's pleasure is.
I got an idea. Why don't you form a subcommittee of the two select board members, Jan and Abden, and have them come up with an application that's suitable?
I like that idea.
Yeah, I do, too. I think that's an excellent idea.
Think of work with Stan on this as well.
Yep.
Make sure all the concerns are listed.
May I include that we close the public hearing?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
So the motion is to ask yourself and Jan Minzy to work with our town planner and our code enforcement officer to come up with something that works for all four of you.
Is there a second?
Second.
I don't mind doing it, but I, my time is real limited.
Yeah, yeah, we'll try to plan it in the afternoons or something.
Even if you just take this and make changes.
I think that's what, I think we might do is.
Just use it as a.
There's just a few little things here that.
Well, I figure if I am confused by something, then other people probably are, too.
Maybe there needs to be two types of applications, one for the.
That's kind of what I was almost gonna say, but I know you're trying to minimize paperwork, but I hate paperwork, so.
I got that.
You have no idea how much I hate paperwork.
I got that impression.
So.
But again, I just want everybody to understand, the intent was a good intent to try to keep people safe.
Yeah, no, no.
No, I agree.
And, and as the select board, we know what the issues are in town. We know that there is issues. But I don't know if this addresses those issues, if it even, if it even does.
It gives the entree, it gave the entree in to find them. For the people who are scared to say, I have a horrible landlord, help me. It gives you the entree in.
But still may boot them out of the place, because if the landlord decides not to fix those issues, then they're gonna have to leave. So that may make them homeless as well, so.
I just have a question. Are some of those like potential issues that you're talking about, aren't those covered under state law anywhere already?
Some are, but, you know, most of the time that we hear from a renter is one of the bad situation. That's, that's, that's one of it. Or sometimes it's the overflowing septic that's going down into the river because.
Which was, is a code enforcement issue, which we've had that issue before.
But we don't even know, so, so we're chasing hot samples. I'll give you an example. We're, we're chasing hot samples up tributaries, but there's nobody there. But there could have been 12 people there over that weekend and that's why the septic overflowed, you know, it's, so it's a, it, it kind of tied into a lot of different things that Stan thought would be a good idea.
I believe there is a motion on the floor.
Yes, there is. Is everyone all set? All those in favor of forming a subcommittee with Jan and myself? Okay, working with Max and Stan. Adjustments to the agenda. Bob, I believe you have one?
We have a couple.
Couple, sorry.
One is to discuss an application for a license for incorporated civic organizations. There are actually two applications from Waldo.
Okay.
And Carrie Lupien is here and it'd be nice if we could kind of push this up. So if she has a case to do, she can. And the second is to include under the consent under warrants 36 and 37, which were payroll warrants that came out today.
Okay. So you wanna put under new businesses 10.1 instead of 10.3?
If that's all right here, Mr. Sherman.
No, it's up to you. Somebody wants to make a motion for that?
I'd move 10.1 for the Waldo application.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
And 9.2.7 for the warrants, 36 and 37.
Yep. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Citizens' comments. We haven't. Go right ahead. You gotta walk right up there, front and center.
It was a humbled booty. I was a little surprised to see that the Friendship Street Head Start building was on the market. Didn't know that it was up for sale. So, I did a little research in the Lincoln County News article there. Right here. I'm amazed. So I thought, well, that's interesting. I'd like to get in on that if I could. So I don't know what the deal is with that, but I'm assuming it's town property, therefore belongs to the taxpayers. Therefore, if we get rid of the asset of the taxpayers, we probably ought to get some money for it. So I'm wondering, are we selling this? If so, how much are we selling it for? And if we're selling it, I'd like to put in a proposal to buy it, depending on the price, of course, but I would like to see it as a, one-family residence on the top floor and the bottom floor to be, continue to be used as a educational facility of some sort. So, this is really, really simple, but I wrote up a proposal for that.
So, before you get too far into this, we had an RFP for this. It was out for three months. So there's a form that we were accepting RFPs on. That period, you had to have your RFP in by January 18th. So currently, we have one proposal in front of the board. And we also asked for an appraisal of the building to, that we're waiting for. So that's where we're at in that process. If you had a proposal, the best way to do that is, we, Max can provide you the form of the proposal and you would fill out that form and submit it to the select board for consideration.
Yeah, I didn't even know what an RFP was.
Okay, it's.
I didn't know that they were out there, that they were.
It was on our website. It was on, we put it on Facebook. It was in the newspaper, both Lincoln County News and Portland.
I looked.
We talked about it.
I looked on Lincoln County News and I could only find it once, but I, I mean, I, I spent dozens of hours researching this foolish thing. And all I saw on Lincoln County News was a little tiny square thing that said they were looking for, you know, I can't remember how, I got it in here.
Yeah, that was our, because legally you have to notice those, so that was our legal notice.
That was there for three months?
It was from December, I believe, or November to December 18th.
Really? In the Lincoln County News?
I believe we put it in more than once and it was open, it was, that was the period that it was open to submit.
So I only find one, but tells me I didn't, didn't find the others, but I mean, didn't, they weren't there, but. And then, an RFP is a form that was supposed to fill out?
It's a request for proposals, and what it is, is it, it gives you information on the property. It gives you what the town's vision could potentially be. It offered, and it, it tells you, gives you a form to fill out. It's, it's about that thick. It's not, it's not complicated at all.
Right, right.
But that's, you know, that's where, that's what the pro- But that's, you know, that's where, that's what the process was, it's not on the open market, no. Not that, and, and just so everybody's clear, not that it, that's all something that the select board has to have a discussion about.
Hence the appraisal.
What's that?
Hence the appraisal that we've requested.
Well, that, with a, it goes down the shore, and it's shoreline property, and the way real estate in Maine is, it's cuckoo. I could envision somebody from California coming over and paying cash for several hundred thousand dollars for it, cause it's nuts out there, but anyway. So can I get a? Okay, and, and I couldn't find anything on the website about getting an RFP, or how to get it?
Well, because technically, the RFP was due January eighteenth.
Cause it, it, somewhere it said, you can go to waldabourmain.org and get an RFP, and I went to waldabourmain.org.
The RFP, the, the request for proposal period technically closed January eighteenth, those proposals had to be in January eighteenth. So it would have timed out on the website.
When did Head Start decide to get out of there?
So we had notified them, I think it was last June, that we did not have heat in the building anymore. And it had to be replaced. So I met with Claire and Barbara, Claire Berkowitz and Barbara Moody. And we were going to go ahead and do the replacement, we had two different companies come in, give us prices. When we started the work, when we started and said to the, um, Winnie, I think the select board actually had awarded, you know, based on the quote, we called, they said, okay, it's, you're, you're looking at, you know, some lead time with that. I kept them in the loop, we discussed it further, and two things happened with Head Start. One was, they were not open, even with, um, in September, technically, I guess they could have been, but they weren't even teaching, I was told, at least, this is what I was told, they were doing in-home, they were not open in September. And they had no ability to use the second or third floor as they thought they would be able to. There were issues with, they were going to go ahead and do some things on the upper floors, but that was not something that could be done without a lot of renovation to it.
So I guess, one question is, I'll fill it out with paperwork, but is it, is the select board of the town even considering selling it just outright? Is that an option? I mean, I would think it would be for the benefit of the taxpayers.
So, yes, I would say.
That's why, that's why we asked for the.
That's why we.
Asked for the appraisal.
Asked for an appraisal.
So as far as I know, that's probably none of my business, but I assume you only have one, did you say you only have?
We, that's public knowledge, we have one proposal on the table that is under consideration. We've also explored the other option of, should we put it on the open market? The issue is, if, if you, when Max gives you the RFP, you'll see there were some parameters that the town would like to see. If you were to ask the neighbors, some of the neighbors would prefer that we not put it on the open market, because you don't know what you're going to get in the open market. Somebody compared that it could potentially end up like some of the other buildings that we have in town that become very long projects. So that's something the select board has to consider.
I would love to see that as a, basically a homeschool, and that would keep it as a school like it is now. So there wouldn't be any need for reorganizing the town or anything, but whatever.
And, and just so everybody's very much aware, I mean, and we, we addressed this, and I think Head Start did too, you know, it wasn't that they were asked to leave, or, but when I called them and said, you know, you're, we're looking at winter, I mean, there were parts that we couldn't get. You know, that was not a decision that we said, you have to leave, that was a decision they reached on their own.
Much of that, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, select board comments, Bob?
I have none.
No way.
Ghetto, I have nothing.
Jan?
Wow, well, just an announcement, and I don't have a, a lot of detail, but the one act plays, Madomic is a part of that, one act plays are Friday and Saturday, and they're being held at Camden, so it's in the neighborhood. PM, do you know any, any more details on that?
I do, on Friday night, there are three schools competing, and Madomic is at eight P M. And then Saturday, forgive me, I don't know exactly what time it starts, but it's all day, and there are several schools competing. Ten dollars at the door on Monday, Friday night, and ten dollars again if you should go back on Saturday.
Do you know what time it starts on Friday night, so you get to see all three of them?
Six, six o'clock.
Six, that's good.
There's one at six, one at seven, and Madomic's at eight, and it's a timed performance, if they go over their time, they're disqualified.
They're fun, they're really fun, and Madomic has a really good, good one this year, I think.
Will?
I have no comment tonight.
Okay, all right, moving along, town managers report.
I have none.
Nothing, geez, we're gonna move right along. Would somebody like to approve the consent calendar? Is there a second?
I second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All right, new business, the Waldo Theater for their one-day liquor licenses.
It's a simple.
Yep, I see that, simple application.
Simple, um, one-day liquor license, one's for four thirteen twenty-two, and the other is for four thirty twenty-two.
Yep, so select board got any questions, comments?
I was just hoping Carrie could tell us a little bit about.
Yes, that's what, that was my next thing.
Get some advertising.
Sure. Uh, well, first off, uh, for those of you who don't know me, I'm the board, uh, president of the board of directors at the Waldo, and thank you for fitting us in last minute on the agenda, I do appreciate it. We are in the process, as you know, we've been approved for a year-round liquor license, beer and wine license with the state. We're pending that, um, that is pending a health inspector's license, and that is riding on us getting a standalone sync. We're waiting on some plumbing to happen before we can get our health inspection, which would lead to a permanent annual beer-wine license. So we have the opportunity to sell beer and wine at two events in April, and when I spoke to the area's liquor inspector, she suggested that we take out a one-day event license for both of these events. So as you can see on the form, the first one is, uh, on the thirteenth, we're doing a movie, uh, film thing called, uh, Mountain Film Presents. It's a fundraiser for the Waldo Theater, it's a selection of curated outdoor movies. And we have, um, Oxo Brewing and Tintop Cider are online to donate all of their proceeds from beer and wine sales that night to the Waldo. And then at the end of the month, we have a concert with Golden Oak, and again, we'll be having beer and wine sales, and, um, it'll be a fundraiser, all, all proceeds go to the Waldo. So I'm looking for approval for both of those events, and I need to submit it to the state at least twenty-four hours before the event.
Can you just tell us a little more about what Golden Oak is?
Golden Oak is a folk band, it's a four-piece band, it's a sister and brother duo from Portland, and they're gonna be performing at the Waldo at seven o'clock on the thirtieth.
Any other questions? Seeing none? Somebody like to make a motion on those applications?
I move that we approve these two applications.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? You are all set.
Great, thank you, hopefully we'll see some of you on the thirteenth at Mountain Film Presents.
Hopefully your plumbing gets done soon.
I hope so, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, appointments to the Sylvania Task Force, Carl Solberg?
Yes.
You met, you knew Carl when we walked into the room, didn't you, you met him?
Yeah, he's involved with Coastal Rivers, a, yeah, great guy.
Yeah, he's amazing.
Very knowledgeable.
Wonderful him.
And Julie's met him, he's been extensively involved in brown site rehabilitation. I didn't know it, but his, he was in charge of a project in New Jersey that was one of the first ten brown sites that were federally funded.
The brownfields.
Ronald Reagan signed off on that bill, and his was one of the ten that got approved.
He was the parks director.
Yep, and he has had extensive experience dealing with these sites.
And managing them.
We happen to have something like that here in Waldenboro, Pennsylvania, so I think it's wonderful that he's applied to the committee, and I hope we get him on there.
He's a wood carver artist also.
Is he?
Yep, he shows his stuff.
Cool. We got another carver, we got another carver in the room as well.
We do.
Wood butcher.
Wood butcher.
All right, does somebody like to make a motion to appoint Carl?
I made that motion.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'll second your motion.
Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? There we go. All right, the town forest treatment for woolly beetles.
Yeah, I, I say you say al, I can't say it.
I ain't either, that's why I didn't. I know my limits.
What is it, it's a woolly?
Adelgen.
Adelgen.
I just stick with woolly bullies.
Woolly, woolly beetles.
Woolly bullies.
So we were successful in getting ten thousand dollars from the Stephen and Tabitha King Foundation this past cycle to help with the immediate treatment. Uh, it will serve as a portion of the estimate that we received from EB Landscaping. And this is just some authorization that's required, so we can start spending the funds to, uh, start the treatment this cycle for the more impacted trees.
What's the actual cost gonna be?
Twenty-eight thousand?
Twenty-eight thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars, one for each of you.
Maybe you could tell, tell them a little bit about the long-term goal there.
Hi, everyone, I'm Leslie Lorenson, and I'm, um, the chair of the Conservation Commission. So, um, we met with Elizabeth Brighton, she's out of Ellsworth, um, and she walked the forest, she met Will and walked the forest with him in February. She came back and said that the trees are obviously in distress due to the hemlock willia adelgid, which we, you know, that's no surprise, we knew, we've been working with, um, I'll just remind you, we were working with the Maine State Forest Service, this, one of the state entomologists has been down and walked it with us, and, and did beetle releases. So this estimate is based on her, um, site visit, it's, um, you can see the details there. It, the application holds a residual of up to four years, depending on the level of infestation. This will help spot treat and allow time for the biocontrol, which is the beet, beetles, for the numbers to build up. The cost was more than we anticipated, so we've just discussed now getting the approval to move forward with the ten thousand worth of treatment, uh, focusing on the most dire and oldest trees first. And, uh, we've spoken with the arborist, and she agreed we could do this in two phases, with the second treatment being in early spring twenty-twenty-three. So we, the Conservation Commission meets again another two weeks, and our, our, I'm, my hope is that we'll agree as a commission that our big priority this year will be fundraising and grants and outreach to raise the money for the second phase of treatment. Is there any other questions?
That was my question, is where's the other eighteen tabs gonna come from?
Yeah, a lot of hustle, I think, this year, we, uh, we did start a clink, um, last fall, so we'll be pushing that some more. And I think Max and I will be talking, hopefully finding some more grant money, and, um, I have it on the agenda, but we'll be talking about maybe doing some fundraising for that as well.
And there's twenty-five hundred and sixty-five trees affected, is that what their, that estimate is?
It's a hu, right now, she's got a hundred and twenty-five hemlock trees, are the ones that she'll have treatment. So she looked at the ones that were, um, closest to the trail, she didn't go through the whole forest.
All right, I gotcha.
And why is the, this so important with, with the biological control?
So the state entomologist shared with us that in, uh, the Berwick Bond Woods, I don't know if you're familiar with that, um, but that they did a beetle release, the state did a beetle release in two thousand and seven for them, however, they, um, weren't able to treat with the pesticide, and she said now all their trees are dying. So we have a timeframe, and this is speaking with the entomologist, we have a timeframe of about seven to ten years to save our trees. So it's crucial we get on, and especially when we've already had the beetle release, it's crucial we get on the treatment of the pesticides now for them. And just to give you an idea, one inch of hemlock twig can have hundreds of each of the hemlock willia adelgid covering it. And if you've ever walked the forest, there's a lot of big hemlocks with a lot of, um, branches, so you can only imagine what's in the forest right now.
So you're just getting the ten thousand worth of treatment?
We're gonna get the ten thousand worth of treatment, originally, we were hoping that would be for some trail work too, which is just gonna have to be sidelined for now, we'll do what we can, and then, yeah, work this year to raise the rest of the money.
Good, so I guess, Bob?
Trees talk to one another. Is there any research that suggests doing just ten thousand dollars worth might give us more protection than just the trees that are injected with this stuff?
You mean, do you mean doing a spray pesticide, or we're doing the injection?
It doesn't sound like you're spraying, it sounds like you're treating it the way you treat dengue disease.
Yeah.
You're actually putting it up in the trees and hoping it'll go through the system, and I guess it goes down to the roots as well.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, the injections, so the injection system, it's, it's inserted directly into the tree, and whereas sprays are applied in a mist to the outside of the plant, so the product never comes in contact with anything injected outside of the area. So it helps the tree that it goes to. We can certainly have, you know, we'll be in contact with the arborist and with the state entomologist, so over the year, if treatment's looking good and we can cut back next year, that would be great news, but.
Was there other pesticide, um, options than just the, in the trunk?
There's the spray option, which is.
Is that the oil?
The, no, the horticulture oil is another alternative treatment to keep it cut back through the summer months when you can't treat with pesticide. So, no, it would be spraying or injecting, and we felt as a commission that injecting was probably the safest bet in the town forest.
Are there any unintended consequences as a result of the treatment?
Not that we're aware of, I mean, the state entomologist gave us all the guidance, I wrote everything down, and we reached out based on her suggestions. And, you know, so I, I trust that we're moving in the direction we should be.
Colonel?
I just ask, wanna know if, uh, if you're aware of other communities that have treated hemlocks, and what their success rate was?
Sure, well, it's kind of, um, exciting that you say that, we're, actually, communities are looking to us right now with what we're doing with our hemlocks. So we've been working with Coastal Rivers, and they're doing some treatment on their properties, and they have some members that are doing it, but we're collaborating with them, it's kind of, not that hemlock willia adelgid is new, but it being in the mid-coast area is newish, and so, so, yeah, we're keeping everybody updated, I've been keeping a report going, so that way we can educate people on our experiences.
When might this happen, or when will this happen?
When, will the trees get treated? It has to happen in late spring, so it will happen very soon for the, for the pesticide injections.
We might contact Lincoln County News.
Yeah.
And people can learn from.
We can certainly reach out, you know.
This group, you know, what we're doing here.
Pesticides are a hot button issue, but, um, we're hoping to do some educational, we've talked about it, doing some educational walks through the forest. Um, we can show, you know, we have a beetle insectary, so we can certainly show people what we're doing there.
Now, I believe on the backside of the forest, they had the property cut off, is that of help with the beetles? As far as, you know, you're treating these ones, but you're not treating over here on somebody's private property.
Yeah.
Does it really make a difference, you're treating yours, because you still have the beetle over here, and after four years, that beetle can travel over to these trees that we're treating now?
Well, the neighboring property is really getting a benefit to us, because the beetles are gonna travel, they eat, they, that's what they eat, is hemlock willia adelgid, the larva, so the, the neighboring property, yeah, it'll all be a benefit really to them, what we're doing.
It's important, this, this project, because the state entomologist said this is one of the oldest, and, and, uh, largest hemlock forests that she's worked with.
Yeah.
She really emphasized the importance of getting on this, and I believe she was adding it to the, the state's priority list too, so.
Yeah, we've been featured in the state newsletter, um, last fall, she did a little update about it, and.
So it's state money to help?
Well, we did get five thousand dollars worth of beetles from them, which she said was completely unheard of, but it was due to our communication and willing, willing to be flexible.
I think that should have been out too, you know, should have been.
We did, we did beetle releases, we invited the public, we put it on our Facebook, if you don't follow all the. If you don't follow all the Borough Conservation Commission on Facebook, please do.
They do all kinds of things.
Yep.
They're a fun crew.
But we still have to raise another eighteen thousand dollars, but.
That's why we have Max.
Yes, Max.
Buy a beetle.
Buy a beetle. Oh, I love it. Buy a beetle.
Yeah.
Grab a clink.
Buy a beetle.
We could probably sponsor a tree or something, you know, there's some really beautiful trees in the front.
Sponsor a tree. I love that.
Yeah.
I like buy a beetle the best.
Just don't touch them. Let them, let them do their work.
Yeah, no patting them and.
I'd name them.
Sing to them.
No taking them home.
Benny the beetle.
All right.
Sing Benny and.
Thank you for doing this project.
Sorry, one other question.
Go ahead, Bob.
Do, what do we have to do to administer the grant? Anything special? Is it like the grant we did for Audia Wives or is it totally?
No, it's totally different.
Okay.
This one's from the Stephen and Tabitha King Foundation. We already got the check.
Oh.
I just need the select board to authorize spending the money now.
Okay. I move we authorize spending the money.
I'll second that.
Is there any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? You are all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, uh, old business, VOA.
So just so everybody knows, they couldn't, VOA couldn't make it tonight, but it wasn't because of them. It was because I did not get to them quick enough to make sure they didn't have a conflict. So it's, that, that was on me, not on, not on Brian. They will be here. It looks like we have a very heavy meeting for the twelfth, so I'll probably invite them to the following meeting. We've got a lot on the agenda for the twelfth.
Okay. I guess.
Oh, Max has an update, though.
Yes, go ahead, Max.
For them, I guess. I forgot about you, Max. It's been a long couple of weeks.
Ah, I mean, you remembered me five minutes ago about getting eighteen thousand dollars, but.
Yeah.
So I did reach out to Brian and he said that he did have a conflict. VOA is still interested, obviously. They are gonna be applying for some funding to assist with demolition. Uh, and that's a year's worth process. They just need to know whether or not the status of, if they have the ability to say on applications that they can do this type of thing. So that's something that I guess we can talk more with Brian about after this meeting to see if April twenty-sixth is when they can come here and meet and discuss or if they need to be here April twelfth.
Right, either one.
Because I don't know what their timeline is.
Okay.
Go ahead, Bob.
Do we have a special meeting with them if we need to?
Select board, public meeting. Yeah. I mean, that's, that's your decision, actually.
Yeah, I just put that out there.
I think if Max finds out that they need it sooner, maybe we can.
I'm just saying, we have the intersection is on for April twelfth. We have.
The nineteenth might be you.
Yeah, we, we have, um, some property owners coming in who have been previously fined on the twelfth. So we're gonna have a, a full plate, but see what Brian says, when he can come.
See what Brian says.
Yep. Cool. Awesome. Is there anything else? I don't see anything on the agenda. Items for the next meeting, which we already have the.
The intersection, which has been advertised to talk about the intersection downtown.
Yep.
And we have stans and outletters to people who have outstanding, um, code enforcement issues that we had talked about in the fall. And some fines that are still outstanding from those code violations. That'll be on the next meeting.
Okay. All right.
That's in addition to the rental registration and the medical marijuana.
Right.
Yep. Yes. Would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn? Max?
You, you wanted us, uh, executive. Max wants an executive.
Okay. All right. All right, so.
I didn't realize that. Is it a contractual matter or is it?
Yes, I would say it's a contractual matter.
So.
Okay.
So I will convene an executive session pursuant to MRS, one MRS eight four oh five C to discuss a contractual matter.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay.
I forgot about you again, Max. Hello.